Hey. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
How's everything?
Very good.
Good. And I like you too. I'm really excited to see you.
Look at how he cleans up so nice.
That was fun.
I'm so happy to be here, buddy.
You know, we live in a great country and we work in a great school system. I'm very thankful for that. I'd like us to bow our heads and thank our God for our children that we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we welcome Mr. Knott, who's going to give us some information on threat assessment procedures. And we all have a copy out in front of us and then are we going to also see it on the monitor?
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to present this today. This is a new process that we have in mind, but before we go into that, just wanted to give a brief historical overview of crisis intervention in Citrus County that I've been aware of since starting in 1978. If you're unfold. Around the eighties, we first became aware of kids becoming more suicidal or at least indicating those concerns. We didn't really have a good process or any process to work with that. So that was where this stuff started, back in the 1980s. Carl Austin was on board, Neil Weiss, Casey Kears was the Director of Student Services, some old names from the past. And through a collaborative effort with Psych Services and Student Services, we came up and adopted a suicide intervention procedure. We trained all the administrators, psychologists, student service folks in lethality assessment, and that's pretty much been our standard of care. It's been working pretty well. We also developed the concept of student intervention teams, which each school had a specific team to handle things that might occur. And when that team got overloaded, we also added the county assistance team. So when you hear like grief counselors, that's the CA team that gets brought into play. With that came the Crisis Intervention Manual that was revised and refined over the years. In 2005, the STP came on board, you're familiar with that, an attempt to get a lot of agencies working with kids to change their trajectories as soon as possible. That's still in process. In '07, we started hearing about kids that wanted to cut themselves, and you may have experienced some concerns about that. So new procedures were added to the Crisis Intervention Manual for repeated self-injury. In 2011, the Crisis Intervention Manual was again updated by Student Services. Some of the things were tweaked, some new resources were added, and then eventually, I think right in that timeframe, was incorporated into the school's safety manual. So it sits in that document now. So while those things all happened for individual student crises or for broad laws, we really didn't have a major way of responding to threats that a student might verbalize or that a parent might say we overheard. We didn't really have a consistent way of doing that. So we developed the threat assessment process to provide an organized framework that each school could be handling in a similar way so that we made sure that no one fell through the cracks and maintained safety and also identified proper pathways for kids to get proper intervention. We didn't make it up on our own, although we initially started two years back. We had meetings, Mr. Bratcher was involved with the preliminary planning about four or five years ago. But while we were sort of still thinking about what we wanted to do, Broward County went along and developed a really nice one, which they then revised in 2008. And I spoke to the folks down there that run that. The original developers were my colleagues when I served on the Executive Board for the Florida Association of School Psychologists. They were top-notch people who are now retired, but they revised their plan in 2008 and just systematized it a bit more, and it's based on FBI practices that they're the masters of threat assessment and intervention. So they revised theirs again in 2008, and that is the document that I studied a lot and shared with my colleagues on the Threat Assessment Committee. And we tweaked it and revised it to make it a better fit for Citrus County schools. The committee, Mr. Mullen, was great in providing the leadership for that. So we had an administrator and guidance council from each level of the system, par middle and high, school psychologists, school social workers. Ms. Powers was involved with that. And the Director of Services for the centers was there, and the leadership from the school resource officers were involved with this also. So we had a nice group, and the meetings didn't last all that long because the model was pretty comprehensive. And this is sort of what it looks like. The goal, again, is to maintain safety and security for everyone by finding ways identifying kids and then finding a way that we can provide some support if they needed it. Three-stage method. Initial response, which is under the responsibility of the building-level administrator, then a Level One screening, which provides a lot of data about a child, about a student, and if we have insufficient data after we do that step, there's provision to do even a greater type of assessment called a Level Two assessment. But not all students will need to go through all of these steps. Again, it's to respond in a very timely way and to not overreact or underreact to a student's threatening behavior. This flow chart may be, I hope you can see it okay on your monitor, but this is sort of the process. When a threat comes in, the school-based administrator is made aware of it and then makes an initial determination if this is an extremely serious threat. And at that point, Student Services is contacted along with law enforcement, and action starts to occur, that's in the imminent threat. Most threats that we experience don't have that degree of lethality or concern. Gives us a lot more time to respond. That's going to be somebody's on the way to your school to do some damage, and we can't wait to get teams together. We just need law enforcement, and we need Student Services to notify the district service center. When that, once that comes in, if that's not the case, then there's an interview process that the principal will have, and based on his impressions and also by consulting with members of the school intervention team, which again is a school psychologist, school social worker, administration, nurse could be part of that, school resource officer, and possibly a teacher who is knowledgeable about the student, they'll make determinations on what level of threat that exists, similar to what we do with suicide. In suicide, we differentiate between low risk and medium and higher risk. Low risk get one set of treatment, and medium and higher risk get another. And a similar approach to that, this model will continue forward by having a Level One screening where someone's going to be looking at the student's CUE folder, finding out if they have exceptional student needs, if they have language problems, if they've been involved with prior Baker Act, if they've had a history of violence. Those things all add into the mix when it turns to do, when it comes to do a lethality assessment on how possible this risk might be actually carried out. If there's enough information there, we can move on, meet with the parents, meet with the family, see if we can get services set up, and also provide a student intervention or student supervision plan. If we don't have enough information after Level One, or if we feel we really have a bad feeling about this particular case, then it can go into a Level Two assessment, which is way more involved, involves parent interviews, student interview, and teacher interviews to try to really pull out more and more information so that the best intervention plan can be made for that particular situation. When that's all done, the parents are met with with the student, and again, the supervision plan is revisited, and that doesn't go on forever. Once a student's supervision plan is made, there's also built into the process a timeframe that they'll look at this again, will look at it again in a month or two months, depending on the nature of the situation. In that process, too, we also collaborate with the centers if that's where the student's going to get additional support, so that the release of information, so that the teams at the school know, yes, the student is getting services, yes, the therapist is feeling like they're making progress, or what else they'll need to do at the school to accommodate this kid's, this student's problems so that they won't feel the need to retaliate in some type of aggressive fashion. So this, this process, there's files that are kept, they're not going into the CUE files, so we're not going to try to affect a person's life by having those follow them. They would stay with the administrator, but there will be in the near future a link on Skyward that the availability of a confidential file, an administrative confidential file, so that if the child moves to a different school, there'd be the capability of having some dialogue with the last administrator who can then give a heads up or at least let them know what issues the student faces and what was useful in trying to help the student through. So from my perspective, it's a pretty, pretty tight process. We streamlined it a bit from the Broward County model, which had a few more forms, and one of the principals commented like, well, it's like 39 forms, can't you? We go, well, we don't need all of them all the time, but it's nice to not have to go out and create one individually, and plus, it does give some standardization to our district and the ability to do that. Taking a little bit, just a few of the things I pulled out that might be of interest to you is the initial threat assessment, a threat checklist is based on, again, these are from FBI research, looking at it's a threat, low level, medium, or high, based on generally specificity, prior action, availability of the devices or the things that it takes to carry out the threat, how, how close are they in doing this, have they had previous attempts to do things before? And this gives us sort of a beginning stage of how to respond, and then what we need to do about it. Are we just monitoring, are we going to Level One? Are we getting the SRO and supervisor and Student Service Center right on board? Are we just setting up some counseling? What are we going to do? So it provides an organizational component to dealing with the threat, which is sometimes very useful, especially a threat can bring a lot of stress on and the more organized the materials are, the easier it is to respond. This is a data collection process on just looking at other agencies that are involved, the student's discipline history, if they had involvement with ESE, or if they have a 504 plan, maybe they have a mood disorder or attention deficit hyperactivity disorder and are bound to just say things without really having much substance to it. What they seen for, about the school psychologist at all, anger management counseling, are there any diagnoses? So it also has some protective things, so there are support involved, clubs. We have some other folks that we can draw in who will have some stabilizing components to the student's concerns, and then additional factors. So it serves to organize it. And then this is a very useful document, it's called the TRACK. It's based again on FBI risk assessment factors and the components that lead into a person who kind of carries out threats are listed on the left side, those are the factors, and then there are several items that, that connect with those factors, and then, do they have it, do they not have it, or do we need more information? And if we end up getting two more and need more information, that's probably the time that a Level Two assessment would be conducted because we don't want to have too many loose questions or unanswered questions about the student's situation. Useful. Threat assessments don't guarantee that no one's, that everybody's going to be safe, but it's a nice organized process to be able to do that, and we can certainly use some standardization from my perspective with that. The next document, that's the Level Two Assessment Summary Plan of Action. This occurs if it goes to Level Two, what we did, what we need to do to make sure that the student's needs are met and that the school is safe. And then the school resource office is particularly like this, the student supervision plan. They don't have to go through the whole Level Two assessment to do this. This could occur really anywhere in the process, but what it does is provides a nice structure, a nice little checklist for some of the things that might be different for that student after they issue a threat. And it moves all the way through from the different things that we can do as a school to some outside interventions. There's a component there, sometimes a student's threat might evoke a disciplinary response, and there's a section on there for, you know, what's happening with that. So it's a nice summary form, and this, again, this isn't, this is done, but it's not forever. This is then, it's revisited. At the time of this meeting, there would be a second meeting already scheduled to review this and see how the student is responding to all the things that happen. Is the threat minimized? Is it worsened? What do we need to do to move the student forward? And then to go with this, there's a training component that goes with this. Mr. Mullen already met with the principals last week to give them a heads up about the concept and a review. I think he gave him, them a copy of the, the threat assessment procedure, which is, send out on email to them pretty much. Ms. Sernich spoke with the assistant principals a couple days after Mr. Mullen did, and then tomorrow, there'll be two-hour trainings for folks who will be involved with this process, mostly student service folks, school psych, school resource officers, and that will be repeated again in October, the following week. Then by mid-October, I'll have a PowerPoint that will be useful to develop this concept and explain this concept to instructional and non-instructional folks. And then towards the end of September, I'm sorry, of October, I'll review this process with the ESE specialists, since if there's ESE students involved, the ESE specialists would need to be knowledgeable about what we're doing. So if this sounds okay to you, I would feel good about proceeding.
I noticed you said, you mentioned several times the timeline, and when you establish a follow-up procedure, a timeline procedure, that's distributed to everyone who is involved and everyone is expecting that.
To come back and re-meet, yes. So my take on it is that it's not going to involve that many students with that level of intense kinds of threats, but the ones that do have that, I think it's really good to not leave it just an open-ended, well, we did the supervision plan last year, and okay, summer went on, and it's a new school year. It's not good to leave it open. So I think by having a time already set for a future meeting, we're going to keep this in effect until such and such a point, and then we'll already schedule the meeting, the expectation is the team comes back with the student, with the parent, and see what goes on at that point, see how things are going.
And you mentioned also that some of the information should go on Skyward if the student moves, say, to another school, but that can only be accessed if, say, the principal of the other school calls this district, this district gives access to it or is the information, shares the information. The principal of the other school cannot go directly to that, is that correct?
If a student transferred outside of our district, I don't think they could access Skyward directly that way. And that, that's another, another issue that happens, and that same issue happens with kids who have been suicidal in the past, that that information isn't transferred outside of our school district, and it probably, it's confidential, but it's also could be potentially life-saving to have that information somehow protected and available to other school systems so that the students receive the support that they might need. So we haven't worked that part out just yet, but it's an important piece.
Oh, very much, very much.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you.
Jeremy, did you forget about the rest of us having questions?
No, this hand was pointing to us and wanted to know if you wanted to ask something of Mr. Knott.
I did. So this process is the same for, and we've seen a number of kindergarten students that have had some of these issues as well as high school junior, or is, is there going to be a different process for those very young students who maybe wouldn't have the ability to sign an agreement or understand some of those things that are in place here?
This process, the model is designed for Citrus County school students, and it'd have to be tweaked to some degree based on the level of understanding of the child, but the parents certainly would be able to understand things. And again, with threat assessments, a kindergartner says, I'm going to blow up the school, probably never going to happen unless the parent is a bomb maker and the kid has been in the workshop. I mean, things can happen that are, that are unusual. So it's better to be, to be cautious, but again, the plausibility, part of the threat assessment, the, the initial stage, is, is it plausible? Do they have access to it? Is it done out of an anger response to something? What was the context that the threat occurred in, and what support and what resources does a child have to carry things out? Because sometimes we find that the younger they start making threats, the worse it gets as time goes on. So again, we begin to have some concern, raise some flags about that particular kid's situation, and maybe it was just a very acute problem that brought the person, the child to that state then, or maybe it's just the beginning of a process, that this is how the child responds to stress and may start to act out on these things more and more if certain interventions are in place. So the child would be, explained as we do with kids in kindergarten, when we do behavior contracts and things with them, we make sure that they understand what it is that we're expecting of them, and we review their progress over time, whereas an older student may not need as much review and clarification. But good question.
And where does Baker acting fall into this? We have a number of students here that are by the school system.
Baker acting is, is, falls into it, there's a place for Baker, a sick person act. If you're a danger to yourself or to others, you can't be Baker acted by a school resource officer or by a physician, by some licensed mental health folks. What the Baker Act will do, though, is give three days of, up to three days of involuntary hospitalization. After that, the student is back. Sometimes there's not great resources that get linked up with that, so we've seen kids in our school system that have been Baker acted, come back to, they're Baker acted on Wednesday, they're back to school like Monday or Tuesday, and they're suicidal Tuesday afternoon. And we go, what happened in your Baker Act? Well, we have this other appointment, it's a month from now, or the parent didn't show up and they were dropped because they're busy at the centers and they expect you to show up for your appointments. If they don't, they'd go on to the next case. So those systems exist, STP exists, there are lots of other things that exist that all sort of work together. If a student is actively suicidal or actively at that moment, you know, if next time you see me, I'm going to be in here with my weapons, then that, this criteria for the Baker Act, it has to be immediate, it can't just necessarily be, I'm thinking about doing these things. It has to be a bit more on the verge of committing some things in the suicide. We've had kids that are Baker acted, that swear they won't hurt themselves by the time they get to the center, so they go, I was just kidding, I don't want to hurt myself, I'm fine, there's no problem, and they don't meet necessarily the criteria to be involuntarily hospitalized at that point when a psychiatrist sees them up there. So this process sort of is more protective than just the Baker Act because it gives us a bit more understanding, a little bit more control, a little bit more upfront on the assessment and to ensure that some intervention is being made. Once we give it to another agency, we don't have those assurances as much, at least that's been my experience.
Dr. Knott, I have a question about our kindergartners. There's a, well, there are problems with kindergarten children, and you said that this information is going to be placed on Skyward?
It would be on, Sherri, oh, there's a student service screen that could have a flag?
It's just going to flag and let the, the school that the child is on to know to contact the previous school because of, there'll be various things, suicide, STP, threat assessment student, so it'll be flagged on that panel, and that will alert that school to call the previous school to get the details.
And even within a school now, everyone just couldn't go to that side and get information?
It's going to be restricted panel, right, administration, guidance.
I'm just concerned about stuff following children. I'm hated, you know?
There's a balance with that. If things are pretty intense for a child, they'll resurface and have more incidences. Sometimes a critical incident early on can help the parents and the child achieve the type of intervention they need earlier on, and that's the end of it. So yeah, it is bad to have an open file on somebody that could possibly come back to haunt them, even though they don't need haunting. On the other hand, it could be very useful if the child later on presents with some of this type of ideation and had a past history of making threats, and this one seems a little bit more. What might seem like an initial case is actually the second or third in a series of significant threats, and it, it would give the interventionist more, more concern, and the intervention would need to be probably more intense as a result of it. So yeah, with, there is a trade-off. I completely understand and agree.
One of my questions is about Skyward, too, and it's just understanding, now, forms here, and, and what's great about forms is they can be a wealth of information in helping, you know, provide what services need to be addressed and so forth, but they're only as good as their availability. So will these be like an online form or within Skyward so that, you know, an administrator, whoever's making that threat assessment, simply goes into their Skyward and then they pull those down? How are these attached to, to the file, or are they attached to the file, to the student's file?
I don't believe there'll be, that the completed forms, if a student's intervening within, we have, let's say they, they did the whole Level Two piece, and there are lots of forms, running interview, teaching interview, student interview, that, those forms would remain at the school with the administrator at that point, and possibly during articulation times, if it was like a primary or middle school, might move up to the secondary through articulation talks, or might remain, that part hasn't been exactly worked out. But there won't be completed forms out there in cyberspace for confidentiality reasons. It's better to have that stuff secured by the school building administrator with access to that. Now, in terms of incomplete forms or blank forms, those will be available through either through Outlook or through the student safe school manual where this will probably be housed, and there'll also be some ways that they can pull these forms up relatively quickly so they don't have to go through the whole, what form do I need for this? Just make it.
And I'm assuming that'll be part of the, the training, the TAs that you all do. And then the other question I have, you mentioned the centers a couple of times, how is our current relationship with them from your department when we do have the needs of sending a student there? Are we getting the type of services and response from them that we need?
Well, I think what, what happened with this particular aspect of it, Ms. Simon, Minerva Simon, who is a Director of Citrus County's Clinical Services, had a chance, Ms. Sernich did the, paved the way for that, and we included her at Sherri's suggestion, which was a great one, so that she would have knowledge of what we were, were planning to do, and her response back was, well, are we going to see everyone? You know, how much, you know, how, how involved are we going to be? Is this immediate, is this every person that, that you assess, are we going to see? And I was, no, I don't see, see that happening too frequently because parents may not choose the centers. There are plenty of private practitioners who they might want to choose, but we wanted the centers to be aware of this process, and we also wanted to be able to facilitate the communication back and forth so that if there was an emergency... So that if there was an emergency in one case of a student through the STP process, it was an immediate emergent response. And the center's psychiatrist was able to see that student very quickly, do an assessment, and give feedback back to the school team, even though we didn't have an official process at that point. So, in that particular case, they were very responsive and very reactive to us. Where I see the difficulties with centers is if a student's Baker acted, it's confidential. Sometimes, we don't get that information, even though we try and we get release forms. Sometimes, the connection back to the school on that, the connection between the guidance counselor or the school psych and the therapist, some of that could probably use some improvement.
It's not a guarantee that there is going to be feedback, either from the centers or from any other place.
That's right.
Release forms are signed, or you try to get the release form signed, so there can be the feedback? Is that why it would not be, like, because it's a private discussion they're having?
Absolutely, and that's necessary to maintain the therapeutic component. But on the other hand, if we send somebody who we perceive as a threat to others, it's bigger than just the confidentiality issue. It's the protection for a larger group issue, which to me has a lot more weight.
But you sort of have to walk the line still, because you have to give the information.
Absolutely, absolutely. They can, like I said, wouldn't get treatment, but we don't want you to know anything about it. The parent doesn't have to necessarily sign the release, or if the student's old enough, they don't need to sign that release. But we'd like to know if they're getting the intervention because that impacts how we're gonna help or assist or protect about that student's issues.
Following up the question that Ginger asked, if the student, let's say, three times was involved in this type of procedure, graduation by school goes on, that information does not become part of the information sent to the college or what?
I think not, I think it would stay with us. I think it would stay with us.
Okay.
Exactly where, I'm not sure. Where it would go after they graduate? Good question, not sure.
Never has, but I want to be sure we weren't going in a different direction. Other questions? All the questions are not, thank you so much, you say some word.
Thank you, thank you, for the great questions. And this, again, this will be refined. I'm planning on retiring in January, but my colleagues.
Wait, 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 it's January?
Yeah. So, this is sort of my?
Really?
Yeah.
They have to approve it, I don't think.
Yeah.
Do you know about that rule we have, you can't do that? Right, at all. We have a rule about that, at all.
You have free votes, that's all you need to know.
That's, I don't know, I have to campaign a little for that. That's my 35th year, and when the weather gets nice, it's, it's just hard. It's just hard.
Miss Yonat one.
So, this process, once it's, will get tweaked and refined, as was the other processes that would be done by student services and ESE folks and other representatives, stakeholders, to take out anything that doesn't quite fit and to add a few things that could be missing. So, it's just the beginning of, hopefully, a useful process for Citrus County Schools.
And so, can the rules and laws change, or do you have to go back and change whatever's still?
Absolutely. Thanks again.
Thank you for your question. Okay, next on the agenda is to review the repeal and revision of policy 8.0.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Later on the agenda, we have the request to set the public hearing for the policy portion of this request. But this is back in workshop at your request with the changes from last workshop. The guidelines said is, and I want to make it clear that this is not the student AUP. Student AUP will come to you at a later date as part of the student handbook, but this is the staff. And I've included in the backup material the minutes from the policy informants committee and then the changes that you recommended at the last workshop in yellow. And I don't think there's any substantial issues with the policy language. I think it's the guidelines that you were most concerned with, the detail on the guidelines. The policy is only five pages, but the guidelines are 20 pages. And Dr. Gettys and I spent a good amount of time going through it and making sure that we captured all of your comments, and then we made a few other adjustments. And I think that we'll be glad to walk you through it if you need, or if you see anything that needs to be elaborated on or further discussed.
Can you point out those places that were changed? Because there's nothing here to indicate which language was changed from the first version. Change yellow?
Well, no, I highlight mine, but they're all underlined, so it's hard to find. It is, it is. Generally, my, I looked over it pretty close and I matched it up with my list, and it, I think you hit all of the points that I was concerned with. But yeah, you could go through them point by point.
Okay. We'll start with page, page two.
So, they don't have highlighted copies that they can reference?
No, like on page two, number five, I think is probably where we changed it to be courteous.
Yes.
Page two of five?
Were you on the policy in the?
We're on the?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes, two of twelve.
You gonna bring more copies with highlights? Okay, good, thank you.
I think we can bring it up for you on the screen. Meantime, I'll start on page two.
Yeah.
Item number five, we added be courteous. Instead of follow rules of etiquette, that's been stricken. And then, on number six, we added the language after make backups of important data files, and we added using defined processes as required.
See it on your display?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go, that's good.
Then on page four. Item number four, we added inappropriate, illegal, or unethical behavior is prohibited to hand, in yellow. And then, under item G, we struck, no teacher or staff member shall bring in personal hardware or software from home for use in the work environment. And we added, no instructional staff shall bring in material for instructional use without the approval of the appropriate district administrator.
Wait, wait, Sam, go back, go back, go back. That doesn't make, I don't, what is it gonna do with purchasing? Of course, we're saying you can't bring something in from home, and now we're talking about purchasing. That was already there.
Yes, it is. We left the language that says, "All electronic resource purchases must be approved by the appropriate district administrator," and then added disregard and things that were brought from home. To clarify that, if they do bring something from home, it just needs to be approved by the district administrator.
Yeah, it doesn't, they seem to.
Doesn't go with purchases? Maybe it's age.
I have a question, they gonna trust us on that, or we have to bring it back?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
We're changing the words, we're just changing words.
Does it need to be district administrator, or should it be principal?
I would say appropriate administrator.
Yeah.
That covers everything.
Appropriate, that's fine, okay.
Appropriate.
Just take out district. Because it could be, yeah.
And does that also cover accessing information right then and there? Because you don't have to bring it home, you can go to the web and get the information. So, does that cover that? Immediate access to information?
That would be changing a lot of our day-to-day instruction to do that.
I don't know if they could get permission for everything to access, especially at the secondary level, or accessing current events, day-to-day activities, you know?
Well, I'm trying to think about a larger picture, a program or something, not a newspaper article.
Yeah, I think that would fall under instructional material, if they're accessing, so that would be.
So, how are we gonna redefine this word material to make sure we're clear about what material we're talking about? As opposed to like a newspaper article or a book or something?
Digital material?
A book.
I think it applies something like a, software, or an app, or a video.
Are we, are we asking the teachers to have all of that stuff be approved prior to using it for instruction? We don't have the teachers have everything they do approved by a principal, right?
Well, that was why, there was a part of me that wondered, really, why are we having this whole line in there?
Yeah, maybe that's.
I mean, I feel like we're, we're, you know, we don't do that with every other instructional item. Where's Mr. Clark?
Where's Mr. Clark, when we need him?
Well, so, see, I.
I think.
He went to get coffee, he said.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's true. I do think there's an expectation that if a teacher brings resources in from the outside, that it has administrative approval. I'll give you examples like a DVD or a video.
There's a policy for the DVD.
And there's a policy for this.
But, I mean, specifically for that. But every item, I mean, I see crossword puzzles come in. I see all kinds of instructional materials come in all the time from my own children. There's, there's no, they're not being approved every day. So, I think that, you know, if I go online, and a lot of these teachers are finding these, instead of magazines, they might find them online. They download the crossword puzzle, they create a crossword puzzle.
I guess it's a fine distinction between, like supplemental material, which every teacher uses, versus like a core piece of instructional content, and so.
And that's what I was thinking, because supplemental material, I think, is pretty broad now. And again, is, do we not have an expectation that all materials will meet the guidelines? Whether that's, you know, next generation state guidelines or coming up common core? So.
Right, so, can we say that all instructional material must meet the, what did you just say, the guidelines?
The next generation guidelines, you know, and/or common core guidelines.
Yeah, I think that's certainly, it's probably more in line with what's actually over.
That's what I think so, too. Because if it doesn't meet that, that to me becomes where the trouble is, not necessarily in.
I understand what you're saying, it can be very restrictive here. If I bring an article in from news article in from home, or in the Chronicle, that's actually not approved.
And if I downloaded it, then it falls into digital material.
Or if I have an app that every day has, gives me the headlines of the day, I don't like the word bring in because.
But it's confusing, you know, what is, bring in how, are you bringing it in?
And maybe you didn't bring it in, maybe someone else brought it in and they gave it to you.
I was just saying instructional staff shall not use materials for instruction that does not follow whatever the guidelines are. Hasn't it? Next generation sunshine state standards or common.
Yes, maybe amended from time to time because they'll be amended.
Yeah.
I wonder if we just, again, following, maybe strike the whole Senate. To be honest, this, I think originally that was bringing in software from home, you know, purchased personally. And so, I mean, we have a whole nother set of policy and guidelines.
There is.
Yeah, there is. We have a whole nother set of policy and guidelines for instructional materials and what's appropriate and what's not, and what approvals are needed. You see what I'm saying?
If you brought in something that was not appropriate, you're gonna be subject to.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, teachers going buy supplemental materials at stores.
All the time.
All the time. And I don't often know that they're coming in and saying, "Before I use this today, can you approve this for me?" The assumption is that it meets the guidelines for the curriculum and it has an effective use and engagement for students. I don't know why we would change that general expectation.
So, we'll strike that sentence that says, "In instructional staff shall bring in material itself."
It would be mine?
It doesn't fit with the purchase of electronic resources. It doesn't even fit in this whole section. Strike it.
But let me make sure that some other place in here, it is implied that whatever is used does meet the guidelines established. Because it cannot be anything you want.
Well, you know what, I think, Ms. Congress, this is more about the tools, not how you use the tools. Is that, is that a good distinction?
Yeah, I mean, is it, where else? And I guess in Mr. Clark's case, if I'm, I'm a new teacher and somebody says, "I expect you to teach, too," where is that, where's that expectation mandated? Is it?
It's, it's the policy on instructional materials, but it's, that we have in our, in our policy handbook.
Okay, so, so that's really, would cover it, whether it's electronics-based, paper-based, print-based?
Correct, that is correct.
It covers that as a whole. This, like Ms. Stoichkov is saying, this is the tool.
Is our instructional material probably up to date to include apps and all those things?
I believe that was three years ago that we updated instructional.
So, we may want to look at that.
So, we do not actually have apps designated in there.
Okay, so, we probably need to look at that, I would think.
It would be a good idea probably to look and review and update that as well, yes. But it had just been done, I think Dr. Bruner had done that with us about three years ago.
The world has changed.
The world, yeah.
And it has.
Years ago.
But are we correct then, as a board, to, could we, can we assume that any materials taught, print, digital, video, whatever the case may be, must meet the current standards that are required by our, by our, you know, local and state requirements?
Correct. We actually, the policy had been updated prior to that a school actually had to go through the county office in order to be able to go with those approved materials. That is the process by which we have designated as rules of the road when we go through our adoption process. So, it basically states that the materials that are actually being taught in Algebra I at one school is taught at Algebra I in all the schools. So, that policy had actually been updated.
And supplemental materials, is that addressed as a cohort group?
It actually has been addressed in the, in the instructional material.
And would that meet generally that same guideline?
It should, but I'd want to brush up on that.
Okay.
And it needs to be written, not just assumed that everyone is going to meet guidelines, it has to be in policy, written down.
Yes.
And so, you're going to check to be sure that it is written down, there's no.
I'll check on that, and then if not, we can bring that back as a workshop and be able to look at that, that policy.
Because we have had issues with supplemental material brought in for teaching, you know, the main material.
Yes, because it also, instructional materials is very broad because it also talks about those media, materials that are in the media center and things like that. So, it's, it's, it's all encompassing.
And I would change that word bring just to use because it doesn't matter how it got there, right?
Well, I think we were gonna suggest.
I know, but I mean, if we go into looking at instructional material again, instead of bringing it in, the concept is that I would bring it from somewhere else rather than using it. So, using is more important than the bringing.
We should probably look at that instructional material policy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it, and I think it probably, what number is it? Needs to.
Four, four point two one, but it probably needs to be reviewed every year. And, you know, thinking about this policy, I'm certain as fast as things changes, we're gonna be looking at this policy pretty regularly, I would think.
It's obviously, like Andy was talking about, where you have a timeline to review, on this type of thing, we better have a timeline to review because it does change so rapidly. And maybe, maybe literally every six months, certainly every year.
Okay, moving on to H, we struck without specific in yellow, and then added clarification at the bottom. Personal electronic devices shall be subject to the guidelines that are used during the school day. We need to insert the word to. Just to clarify that if they're brought in from home, that they, they're subject to the guidelines. Moving on to page five. Item 5A, we struck the word remember. So, it states, if you identify yourself as a district employee, your actions will reflect on.
on me, on you, but on the district as well. And then on B, we struck the word will and inserted may. On page six. Item B, we struck also refrain from and put be cautious when affending or following any students on social media. Under item number three, software subsection A, we inserted personal and district, applies to licenses, and then including personal and district copies used in conjunction with Citrus County School Board functions. Then on page seven, item C, we struck due to-
Oh, it's different.
We struck due to the possibility of software conflicts and excessive utilization of computer resources, screensaver programs, other than those provided with the computer operating system should not be used also. So we struck that. And then we added streaming music to the list of things not to load because of the bandwidth they consume. And then we're moving on to page 10. We struck item three, which stated that employees shall not connect non-district owned devices to the network, etc.
Yeah, mine's different too.
I opened up some pages on the iPad so I could keep the highlighting, and I think it's renumbered my policies.
Sometimes it thinks it's smarter than you want it to be.
Then-
I just burst out. She didn't catch that one. I think you're safe.
Fifteen. Now, the next changes that are included are on page 15. Roman numeral eight, electronic communication.
Before you, before you get there, Dr. Gettis, just for clarification, on page 14-
Yes, sir.
And it is D wireless access. Am I correct that this, does this adequately, I keep meaning to ask you this, cover your concern that we don't have employees plugging in rogue, you know, Wi-Fi hotspots? That's okay. Because I know that's a concern that we've had and-
I believe so.
I mean, as I read it, it felt that way, but I just wanted to make sure you were still good with that.
Especially the kind of last sentence in that paragraph, but as our technology infrastructure progresses, we can actually kind of control that-
Yeah.
Systemwide, so it would actually-
It would identify it when it plugs it in. Okay, sorry.
Your road.
Certainly is.
What geeks it is.
Road devices.
It is very southern.
It's a survey of the citizen, isn't it?
That's right.
And that's rough back.
For us here.
It's in Wikipedia.
Well, then it must be true.
Then on 15, Roman numeral eight.
Webster has it too.
Okay, well, we said that.
Well, it did to all your numbers. Z, double A, double B.
Yeah, letters.
I go on back and do that.
And then we changed email to electronic communication to clarify that it includes other things. And then under A, we struck the word completely. I put friends around private and struck the last sentence that says therefore confidential student information and unnecessary personal correspondence should not be transmitted electronically. Under item C, we struck external or, so in the email account, so it just says third party electronic communications shall, instead of should, not be used for school district communication. And we added because the Citrus County School Board cannot ensure the required archival. Moving on to page 16. Under website guidelines A two, we added blogs, electronic access portals to that. And under B, hosting of websites, we added or if external under the controls of the Citrus County School Board where, where records are maintained in accordance with applicable law. And moving on, maybe that was the last one, I think that was the last one. Now, we can also go through the policy if you have any, we also are going to request the setting of the public hearing for the policy language. The policy's only five pages, and I don't think you really had any substantive concerns with the policy, but we did make some changes. So we can walk through that. The policy's the only thing the school board has to approve in a public hearing, so the guidelines can be tweaked anytime, which is good because it's a moving target. The policy, we've added under item number one, use of electronic resources, A two, electronic or digital communication instead of email address to cover that. And then on page two, under D prohibitive activities, we've added the word district under items two and four. Should just clarify that that is a district.
Evidently your time is up.
I thought it was due at 10:30.
Oh, my. Carry on, carry on.
I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
He's scared, I know.
Okay, then we'll, I guess we'll set the public hearing in a, later in the agenda for-
Yes, I deserve it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for participating and-
Oh, my pleasure, but really thanks, it was a, it was a very collaborative effort, a very collaborative effort.
Next, we have stated the district part two, and this one.
Good morning, members of the school board, Superintendent Miss Timble, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullin, and School Board Attorney Mr. Brad Shaw. We come to you again to share information in regards to State of the District Part Two. Our agenda is as this, we'll be, I'll ask Mr. Bitner to come in and give us an update on the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program at La Canto High School and exciting about, exciting information about our first graduating class from the school last year. Going to move on to gifted, and this was a request from the board in regards to a survey that's sent out and how we are actually delivering gifted at the schools. So Ms. Garner, Stephanie Garner is going to be here to talk about that. I'm going to provide you with an update in regards to our 2012 Professional Development Review by the State of Florida and give you some information on that. And then Mrs. Gail Nobles is going to address career and technical programs that was asked for. And also, if you recall, last year, we had on our State of the District a transition that we'd made from the Horizon Program at WTI to the Graduation Recovery Programs at the schools. So we're going to talk about the recovery programs and also Penn Foster, and that would be Ms. Nobles, and then also AVID, information about the status of AVID in our schools. And then to finish up with Mr. Bob Rust in regards to the full-time virtual options. So as you think about those things, we still have some student data at our last State of the District, just to kind of review, a lot of FCAT data, a lot of AP information. As we start to get information regarding our graduates and as they graduate, that information will be coming out in the next couple of months. We will be coming back to you in December to provide some more specific data as it relates to some of these same programs and a little bit more data in regards to AVID. Also, HR is, is still on the docket to come back and then present information as far as the status of the, of their program in October. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started with Mr. Bitner, IB coordinator at La Canto High School.
Okay, and board, during this course of events, you need to take a break, let me know when you're finished. Welcome, Mr. Bitner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, school board members, Superintendent Timble, Mr. Blocker. I appreciate you having your time today to give you an update on the first class of 2012 and the overview of all of IB. I know your time is valuable and there's a lot to do. I do have 30 slides here, but those 30 slides were not necessarily meant to talk in depth about each one. I did want to keep them in there, however, for a matter of public record. With that said, I think any discussion of IB, we really need to start with what the mission statement was, simply to keep us in mind of where we're going with IB. The first six slides you're about to see here are from IB itself. So the mission statement is, the International Baccalaureate aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. To this end, the organization works with schools, governments, and international organizations to develop challenging programs of international education and rigorous assessment. These programs encourage students across the world to become active, compassionate, and lifelong learners who understand that other people with their differences can also be right. To see the learner-
I was just thinking that, that's a really good statement.
That last sentence you just said, understanding people's opinions can still be right.
Oh, yes.
Really?
Where did you see that?
It was the next, previously.
And board members and commissioners and governors.
All of them.
Your answer to that, are you foreshadowing something here?
No, I think-
No, it's not.
In the sense of the learner profile, the learner profile is really the mission statement in action, and those 10 words on the side there that you see, that is eventually what we want our IB seniors to be by the time they graduate. Inquirers, knowledgeable thinkers, communicators, principled, open-minded, caring, risk-takers, balanced, and reflective. Our next slide, you have a picture of really what the IB curriculum is. In the center, you have the person, this individual student. Outside of that, you have the learner profile, because that's, those 10 words are where we're always going with our students. Outside of that little part, you have the theory of knowledge, extended essay, and creativity, action, and service, which are the core components of any IB experience. And then outside of that, the six different core areas of knowledge. I included this slide because I have pretty strong feelings about the purpose and the validity of just using multiple choice tests to determine how good a student is at anything. And I really feel that the IB philosophy is a much better idea of how to assess our students. And I kept this in here because you will see that IB will test students not only with timed essays, with open and extended time essays, with oral presentations and oral defense, and they will minimize the use of multiple choice, because they feel that this is a much better and more valid way of assessing a student's ability. And those are, and that is how our IB students will be assessed their senior year primarily. People are always curious about what universities will recognize IB, so I put this slide in there, but I'll gloss over this one at any time, if there's any questions on any of these slides, please let me know. Our budget, for those of you who were on the board back in 2006 and 2007, you will know that we approved a budget for 25 students per class for a total of 100 students. Currently, we're about three times that hundred students, we have 287 students, nine through 12. And you can see the breakdown there, 54 seniors, 58 juniors, 86 sophomores, and 89 freshmen. This was the budget back in 2006 and 2007 when it was approved. I come from a family, my father was a managing partner of a retirement firm, and so in my household thriftiness was next to godliness. I believe that it doesn't matter if we have a good economic economy or a bad economy, every penny matters. And you will see that I've worked very hard to try to make sure we not only came in under budget, but are utilizing all of our money wisely. Primary expenses going forward, you can see how much it does cost us when we register students, when we pay for their exams, so it's basically, you can see the numbers there, $805 per student when all is said and done. The class of 2013 with 54 students, it will cost us $43,000, and then the next year, about $47,000. However, we do get money back from the state. The breakdown is there at the top, for every test passed, we get .16 FTE, just like AP, and for every IB diploma earned, we get .30. So the total extra money to Citrus County for our seniors last year was almost $100,000. Our goal for next year is to bring back $150,000 to $200,000 based on the success of our seniors.
Outstanding.
Thank you. The amount given to LHS IB as per state law is $72,700, so we will be able to use that money to pay for materials and test registration, et cetera. Future reimbursement, I put this one in here because it's always seems like it's under attack in the state legislature, that they want to keep reducing how much money is given back to the AP programs and the IB programs. And so I would only encourage you to continue to support, anytime you hear perhaps things are on the horizon that they will cut that to support keeping that in there. I do not know of anything at this point that they're going to cut it, but it's always needs to be at the back of your mind to be ready. Current students, I know when we first started the program, we had a lot of discussions and we, we wanted to know how many students and the attrition. So I've included the class of 2012 briefly, we started with 61 sophomores, 50 juniors, 40, and we ended up with 33 who finished. Our current senior class, we had 71 began as freshmen, and we currently have 54 left as seniors. And you can see where they were zoned down to the bottom. Class of 2014, our current juniors, we started with 86, we currently have 58, and again, you can see who was zoned for what. Class of 2015, our sophomores, we started with 95, we currently have 87. The interesting thing on the next slide is the increase and decrease of the zoned students from Citrus High School and Crystal River High School, sorry, the letters are backwards on the C, Crystal River High School. The freshmen, 89 students are currently in our freshman PIBS program, 32, we've almost doubled how many have come from Citrus High School. We have now reduced how many have come from Crystal River High School, and there's 47 still in that 40 to 50 range coming from La Canto High School. First class of 2012, a quick review, there's 45 total points you can get for IB assessments under six different exams that you take. 24 points are needed to get the IB diploma. 17 of 33 students earned that for just over 50%. Of the 16 remaining students who did not earn the diploma, three had 24 points, but they had a technicality. Eight had 21 to 23 points, were very close, just an extra point, one or two tests, they would have had the diploma. Three had 20 points and three were below 20. So if you look at it, I feel it's safe to say that 27 were within the range and the ability of getting it, the chips just didn't fall where they needed to fall.
What would a technicality be?
Yes, ma'am. There are three with the six different tests that you have to take. The three of them are going to be called higher level exams, which means you have 250 hours of instruction. Three will be standard level exams. There's a little clause in IB that says you cannot get the diploma if you don't earn at least 12 points on your higher level exams. So we had some students that were, perhaps got 11 points on their HL exams, and then they're remaining on the SL, but that technicality knocked them out. Oh, another technicality could be, but it did not fall in for us this year, if you get two Es on your extended essay and your TOK paper, the equivalent of an F, if you get two Fs on those, you can't get the diploma. That did not occur with any of our students.
And the three that were below 20, is that something that was predictable to you?
I think it's safe to say that I could have pretty accurately predicted who were to get the diploma and not. I think it's also safe to say that had I wanted to, those three at different points in the four years were considering leaving. I argued for them to stay because it was my opinion that getting through the four years and having the opportunity was more important than the pass and success rate. And so the answer is yes, that was pretty predictable.
Would you do that again?
Yes. I prefer to have the kids have the opportunity rather than me arbitrarily say, I don't think you can. I'd rather have the person have the opportunity and let him or her decide for himself what they're going to do. The IB test results, the class of 2012, a breakdown by subject, I included that. I included that. I really am a strong believer that transparency is the most important. I realize some teachers kind of feel uncomfortable having people see what their pass rates are. I did not list the teachers. I will not dwell on this slide too much, except to look at chemistry, which is twenty-seven percent passed. That would be Mr. Campbell, and I can't tell you how great a teacher he actually is. That twenty-seven percent is a little misleading because if you look at his results a little deeper, he had the highest percentage of students with the highest score possible, which is a seven out of seven. He had three of those out of his fifteen students. The other reason that chemistry number is misleading is because our first class of seniors had only two choices. They could either take art or chemistry. So, many of the kids in the chemistry weren't in chemistry because they liked or wanted chemistry, it's because they despised art more. I'm not trying to be mean to art because we had some very good art kids. I'm saying that we put this first-year teacher with some very good students, and he had one year left to get them ready. Basically, most of the classes had two years to prepare, so he actually did a fantastic job. And I will add to that by saying, historically, the first, 2012, we had around fifteen kids who won chemistry. Class of 2013, we had about eighteen. The class of 2014, we already have thirty. And the reason for that is because they hear Mr. Campbell is such a great teacher, "I want to do chemistry because I will learn." So, I did want to point out that twenty-seven percent.
See, Bittner, I have a question about choices. You said there were only two choices, art or chemistry.
Or art.
Art or chemistry, right?
So, if we had that six, the hexagon, we have the English, the foreign language, the history, the science, the math. And then we get to group six, which is primarily dedicated to dance. And so, you could do visual art, you could do drama, you could do chorus, you could do band. I've offered it to our band teachers and another teachers. If you'd like to do an art IB, we can pursue that. At this point, the only people that have taken me up is Mrs. Phillips with the Visual Art Program. However, in that group six, you, it says in IB that you can actually take a second course in one of the other five parts of the hexagon. So, you do not have to do art if that's not really where your strength is. If your strength is science or math, you could do another class. And so, at this point, in that sixth part of the hexagon, our students can either take art, they can take chemistry, or they can take a class called Integrated Technology in the Global Society, a blend of humanities and technology to understand how technology is affecting human behavior and human relationships.
So, now they have three choices.
Now, they have three choices. Which is, and this is originally what we had, with only thirty-three students the first year, it wasn't going to be practical to have class sizes of tens. We limited it to, but now that we have more, we have the three options available. And that's the other reason I say going forward, that chemistry pass rate will be better because now kids who despise chemistry and art have a third option.
Did you find out why or what the students did more in chemistry that could reflect on, you know, why the twenty-seven percent?
I think it was, I think there's two answers. The one answer is, we had several in there that were just not good at math, and an inability to do upper-level math can impact how well you can do the chemistry and the chemical formulas. I think the second issue in there was, there was so much for him to try to cover that first year. He was a brand-new teacher. He kind of went over some of the things slightly that were done the first year, but there was so much to try to make sure they got, and there were so many kids who kind of struggled with chemistry to begin with. And my suggestion to all the teachers in the first year was, don't worry about speed so much as worry about making sure we're getting what we're getting. And so, if there's twenty chapters in the textbook and we can only legitimately thoroughly cover fifteen, I'd prefer to have a thorough foundation rather than zip along too fast and have a lot of kids just falter through. So, I think those would be the two reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bittner.
I'm sorry. Chemistry in general, how does that fit into, you mentioned about there being options. How does that fit into the new graduation requirements for a standard diploma in Florida versus IB? Would they then have to take a general chemistry? Because I believe isn't chemistry now part of the graduation?
Not until 2014, but if you look-
But it will be for-
So, the way the statute's written, law is, I don't have it with me, but I can see off the top of my head, there's two ways to graduate, twenty-four credits under the, all the rules that follow and the five, ten pages that follow after that, or an international baccalaureate curriculum.
So, that's the alternative then?
So, a student who does the two years of the IB diploma program is automatically granted that diploma.
But now, assuming some of our kids, a percentage of those, won't pass the IB pro diploma?
Ah, if we go back a little bit further, I'm not as clear as I need to be.
That's okay.
No matter what, if you complete the curriculum in your high school, regardless of how you do on the tests, as long as you complete the curriculum, you will get a State of Florida diploma.
Got it.
Then the additional IB diploma will come in if you can achieve those extra points.
But you still meet the requirement as long as you stayed within that IB program from PIBs, I'm assuming, but thank you, Mr. Bittner. That was a big one.
And anytime you have clarifications, the Florida League of IB Schools, Karen Brown, who works up in Panama City, she's the Tallahassee liaison, and she's part of the committee that writes the law and helps to write the law to articulate it, and they're in the process of refining that to make it a little bit clearer.
Mr. Phillips, something that you mentioned, I've been concerned with the spastic removing in education, all the different programs that are coming in, all the different technology to support the programs. Sometimes if you look at the breadth of something, not the depth of something, and I heard you say that the depth is what IB looks at, and the depth is what a student who really is getting a good education is involved in, and it's not just do everything that you can do.
Correct.
But it's, you're really trying to learn what you're doing. So, learn the five chapters and don't worry so much about the twenty chapters if you have the basics. I was glad to hear you say that.
Well, part of the reason I'd encourage the teachers that last year was, my goal was to give our students a great educational experience, and the teachers on their end are going to be very nervous about their pass rates because that is how they're being judged. And I said, "Don't worry about that now. Give them a great experience so they can enjoy and learn," and we go from there. So, sometimes perhaps I'm a little unorthodox that way, but that's how I feel.
I will support you.
Our next slide, the IB exam pass rate for the one-hundred-and-ninety-eight tests that were taken by seniors, seventy-eight percent of, that's the international pass rate, and we had sixty-eight for our first year. Our IB diploma rate, as you can see, fifty-two in another slide there. We do not currently have the statistics for the international diploma rate. Typically, that's around seventy-five to eighty percent in any given year. Testing, what did we learn for that first year? Month of May is emotionally and cerebrally taxing for our IB students. Four years ago, the goal was to get twenty-five students to finish and to have at least, or twenty-five students to start and have at least twelve to finish, so we more than tripped, almost tripled that. Honestly, we need to improve our TOK, that's Theory of Knowledge, and our extended essay results. We've already identified where our weaknesses are and are currently taking steps to improve that. And finally, I think it's safe to say that all of our IB teachers did a fantastic job. The last line there, not one teacher had to be reviewed by IB, and I say that in all seriousness because teachers grade things. Random sampling is shipped off to IB and graders then judge whether or not our teachers are accurate in their grading. And if our teachers aren't, they will then email me and say, "We need every single thing that teacher has collected from the kids," and then we ship it all off. Not one of our teachers had to be reviewed. Universities currently attending of our seniors, I believe twenty-seven of our thirty-three are in the State of Florida, but you can kind of see the other ones, Williams in Massachusetts, Kentucky, Indiana, New York, Utah. At our IB parent meetings, I stress that I think it's more important to get out of colleges with as little debt as possible than to go to your necessarily dream school and take on a hundred thousand dollars of debt. And so, that was the same message I gave to our seniors last year, go someplace, you can get out and then pursue a master's or a doctorate. Again, there will be some people that disagree with me on that, but that's, I strongly feel that you want to limit the debt. You'll be happy to hear that.
Well, you know, the other thing, Mr. Bittner, what I found with my own kids is, one of my, one of my kids went out of state to a state university and didn't get any financial help, but as a master, in the master's program, you've got a full scholarship, a fellowship. So, that's a message too for kids. You know, your undergraduate degree is one thing, but you, the money may be available as a graduate student-
Absolutely.
-you know, that was never available to the undergraduate level.
Right.
So, I don't know what the kids think that way, but-
They don't. They're looking at what's going to happen next. But I also read in the Christian Science Monitor this summer, and it was talking that in our environment, a regular bachelor's is more or less similar to a high school diploma that we had back in the eighties. And if you really want to distinguish yourself, you need the master's or the PhD or specialized after that. And that's what I've been trying to stress to them. And all these kids that are IB, they have the ability to get a master's or a PhD. I mean, they are really phenomenal.
You know, Max Thompson said, when we talked to him, that the university system and the strength of the United States economy is at the graduate level, not at the undergraduate level. So, it's, bachelor's degree is good, but you need to really go on.
You do. That's the first step, but you need to continue after. Our next slide, the scholarship money. We had about approximately one-point-seven million dollars of scholarship money given to just those thirty-three seniors last year. Fifty-one thousand was the average. We had one National Merit finalist and four commended National Merit scholars. We had five Citrus Gold Scholar Awards and then one full athletic scholarship and state champion. Interesting, I get, I'm a firm believer of getting a lot of data so I can kind of see where we stand. And I gave a parent exit survey to the 2012 parents and to the students. But the parent survey, the first bullet there, ninety-one said that they would absolutely recommend this to other parents. The two primary reasons they chose this program for their student were the high academic standards and the preparation for college. Seventy percent of the parents said they always took an active role in their son or daughter's life, that's important. And ninety-one percent, which I was happy to see, said their daughter averaged, or son averaged, two hours of homework per night, and that's kind of our goal, no more than two hours a night, around that area. Because really, I feel students need to be able to do other things, not just stay at home and read. Reading's not bad. I'm not saying that, I'm saying they need other things. Parent benefits after high school, I won't read this entire thing, I'll kind of summarize it. Andrea Katu, and Mrs. Katu gave me permission to include this. Andrea Katu graduated last year from us. She was accepted into USF almost immediately. They gave her an additional fourteen thousand dollars of scholarship money. When she went there this summer at orientation, her goal is to be a business major. And they told all the students who want to be business majors to go to this big auditorium, and they said, "These, ten or twelve students who are coming with us." Andrea was one of them. And they told this smaller group that because of your great achievements in high school, you've already been accepted into the College of Business, you already are exempt from pretty much the basic freshman courses, and we're going to start streamlining you there already. And so, at this point, Andrea, and you can see the last full paragraph, "I credit IB with so many things," says the mom, not only a thirst for knowledge, but also all these wonderful opportunities that she already has. And I talked to mom last week, and mom said that classes are incredibly easy for her. She's taking Chinese and is currently at the top of her class in a very difficult foreign language. And so, I will add that I know that Andrea was disappointed that she was one of those really, really close people. So, she didn't quite get that diploma, but she was also benefited greatly because of the four years of experience. And that goes back to those three that were below twenty. I still think those three benefited greatly and will have a much better life because of them.
So, this person didn't get a diploma. But she was still singled out by USF, recognizing her two minutes.
Correct. So, what matters most is the fact that you're taking the courses and you're pushing yourself to be the best. I consider the diploma kind of like the medal you win for beating the sheriff on Saturday here. You might not beat the sheriff, but you got a lot of good benefits for running the race.
I'll be an allowance to your father.
Our student 2012 exit interview, seventy-one percent said they'd definitely do it again. Twenty-one percent said probably, two people said no way. Fifty-seven said they had about two hours. The rest, equally on the other side, twenty-one said more, twenty-one said less. Seventy-one percent said the peers were extremely supportive, and eighty percent, the parents were extremely supportive. I don't think it's possible to succeed in IB and do all that you have to do without a strong parent or parental net.
It's interesting, the peer's support, because I've never seen that come up on a survey that said that my peers supported me in school. That's very interesting.
I put that in the survey because that's, I try to really push the tutoring, getting help from others, not being too proud, try to do it all by yourself. And it really, that last class last year did a great job really bonding together, and they became very close, and it was really because of each other supporting them. And if someone had a bad day, "Hey, you can do this," and that was an incredible need for all those ones to get through. Oh, next slide. Final comments, I really see our IB program as having three-step goals. All right, our first goal was just to get one class out the door to see how things are going and then start getting data. From 2013 to 2015, our goal is to raise our instructional methods, our organizational method, to try to get to an eighty percent IB diploma rate. You will find typically after the first year that there is usually a dip in your pass rate because kids who normally wouldn't have survived that very first year feel more empowered to continue because they see people ahead of them. My goal is not to have a dip, it's to get it to sixty percent pass rate for next year, and we have some excellent teachers to do that. And then 2016 onward, it is to not only achieve an eighty percent, but always have that there every single year. My personal goal, I added that, is I would already have, we have three teachers who are IB examiners at this point. Our goal is to try to get all the teachers to be IB examiners eventually because that will only improve educational instruction. And that is the end of my slides.
Same, Mr. Bittner.
Any questions?
Mr. Bittner, when I, if I were to graduate as an IB, and that would be very unlikely, but if I were to graduate as an IB student, typically about how much college credit would I have graduated with if I've gone through the program?
Based on statewide statistics from the Florida League of IB Schools, I would say anywhere from three-fourths to an entire year.
Okay, that was my understanding. So, I was going to say, a lot of them, I think the kids are trying to get in that, and their hope is they're almost quite a sophomore-
Correct.
-when they start.
And we have quite a few students that are actually sophomores already for their first year.
And then just one thing, I know you were, IB in itself has embraced the digital use of student devices. I think you were, you were some of the reasons we actually started going down the road early on, and I'm pleased about that, I'm encouraged by that. Generally, do many of the students or majority of the students, do they use their laptops during the school day or electronics devices to just kind of do their everyday work? I mean, talk about note-taking or things of that nature.
At La Canto High School, we have a student form that they can fill out, not just IB students, but any student, and it has to be approved by the principal, and then I hold it on file. I would say we have anywhere from ten to fifteen percent of our IB students who bring a laptop to school to take notes, to type up their papers, et cetera. I would not say it's across-the-board overwhelming that they bring it in because of all the different platforms, but it has been an incredible tool. We have a young senior who is definitely dyslexic, and he uses that laptop every day to help him do better in school, and he does a fantastic job. So, we do have a need for several students to have that opportunity available, and they do use it in a wise fashion.
So, you think it's more positive than anything for student learning in that regard?
I would unequivocally say for those students who currently bring it, it is extremely positive for them.
Thank you, Mr. Bittner. No questions.
I will also say that currently IB does not do any online testing, unlike our current State of Florida. They still do, they still do it primarily with pen and paper, pencil and paper. They are digitalizing it in the sense that when they get those, they scan them, they upload them, and they send them to examiners worldwide, so they do the scoring digitally. They do not do the actual test digitally, and I don't see that changing at all because they really feel committed to that, the essay, the written essay, the verbal instruction, or excuse me, the verbal defense are really more accurate ways of assessing than just pure multiple choice. IB only has two or three exams that have a very small portion of it, multiple choice. Any other questions?
You know, it's amazing, the State of Florida recognizes IB as a separate track in graduation, diploma, ability, and yet follows none of the platform or guidelines or methodologies or practices of the IB program.
Becomes very politically, yes.
Mr. Bittner, I want to thank you. I got a letter years ago from a student, that I had a very, very good student, and he said the only thing Citrus County was lacking was an IB program. And I thought, "IB? What is he talking about?"
I thought, IB, what is he talking about? So thank you.
You're very welcome. I think that credit really goes to the school boards for having the wisdom. I will say, I didn't put it in here, but I want to add one thing, I know time is short. But we have gotten a student that came to us from India. Her parents live here, they work here, they had the older son go to an IB school in India. As soon as they found out we had IB, they took her out of India and brought her over here so she could participate here. We had a student this past year who was at a Dubai International School. Father's a petrochemical engineer in Nigeria. They had to move for several reasons, but she was in IB for the first year, and she wasn't able to totally finish IB with us, but we got her in as many IB courses as possible. So I think it's safe to say that having IB as part of your county is a definite business growth. And again, I thank you all for allowing me to be in this position. I enjoyed it. And if there's anything I can do, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Bittner, very much. We're going to take a ten-minute break.